What's that, where are you?
Welcome back.
Too fast.
I'm trying not to take too much room here.
That's alright, I got all my crap tonight, so I'm just like you. You see what's happening?
Do you mean we're just wanting to make something?
We have our dates. Hi Marty.
Oh, you're still here?
I'm the unique, uh, unique service in conversation. I just spread it to the rest of the city.
It's great, I'm just breaking one of your friends.
I know, I've seen you. I don't know.
The golden voice in Jewish streets.
Who can reach out and do that?
Go ahead, face the radio.
I could do it now.
Oh, yeah, you can show us. How was that feeling? Twenty ninth of December. We have thirty twenty ninth of December. We'll see what Bill says. Oh, this one, my lord. It's like riding a bike and then going right back in. It's like water with the other side.
So you jump right back in and walk?
Yeah, it's like I never left. Just dumps it in a different spot.
You got a seat, you got a seat for better excitement.
Yeah. No, I was where Jed was. I was always the guy that had to grab the public sheet and the public speaker.
You got a new job, Jed. You got a new job now.
Yeah, exactly.
So are you two are gonna have to share that makeup on?
Yeah.
Level it down a little bit and speak into it.
Sure. Jim, I got a show.
A show. Hi Jim.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, we have to say no to you. Hurry up.
Change it up. Where you been Jim?
Who is that, Jim? Who is that, are we talking about? Seriously? Yeah, where'd you find such a hairy zebra?
Getting close. Okay, I'll call the board of the Chisholm City Council. Meeting January eighth, twenty twenty five. Susan, would you please take real call?
Yes. Councilor Halliwell?
Present.
Councilor Fulton?
Here.
Councilor Baki?
Here.
Councilor Larda?
Here.
Councilor Halvish?
Present.
Mayor Land?
Here.
Right, council, you have a couple additions in front of you here. Apologize for this, so I'm gonna go slow. We do have one, which is gonna fall under Mandy. The first one for the, um, the conditional use permit that went to the board on Monday. If you wanted to throw that in your packet on page three or ahead of it. Under Mr. Johnson, Jim, we have to flip flop his. We need to do the change order first and then do the pay application second. So we're gonna change those around. Easy enough. And then we have two for, we're gonna add Stephanie, so she will be item E. The first thing under her will be the purchase of property at six oh five Third Street Southwest. That will find its place just after page sixty in your packet. And then after that will be soccer update for an action item. And that will follow that. And then we will change my item to G. And Stephanie's gonna take Devon's items this evening. So with those changes, I'd look for a motion and support to adopt the agenda.
Make a motion.
Thank you Jed.
Support.
Thank you Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Pledge allegiance if you will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Any public participation there?
None.
Okay. Move on to council reports. We'll start with Councilor Halliwell this evening.
Good evening. Well, Happy New Year, everyone. I attended an EDA meeting today and we have a community garden meeting coming up by January twentieth at five thirty PM at the Baptist Church. All welcome to attend.
So, thank you, council. Councilor Fulton, good evening.
Good evening. I have no formal report except for, yeah, Happy New Year. So, good morning, everybody.
Councilor Baki, good evening.
Good evening. Happy New Year. I just have a couple things. We have a couple of Chisholm legends, I'll call them, that, um, have, are going in different directions. I'll start off with the Community Foundation. Mary Jo Newbauer is retiring. This is, uh, her final month with us. And we did hire, um, we did hire a replacement, um, who I hope, you know, maybe Amanda remind me, if we can maybe have her get introduced here. We can bring that up at our next meeting. But we did, we did hire a replacement. Obviously, there is no replacing Mary Jo. She's been here for a long time. Her services to the city are second to none. So just wanna give her a shout out and happy retirement to Mary Jo. And then I'm also on the chamber board and Shannon Kishel Roach has taken on a new, a new role. And so, um, again, Shannon has done so much in her role as the chamber director. Just wanna say thank you to her. I wish her the best and happy to say that an offer has been made to, uh, to a candidate for her position. We are very excited about that person. Everything's not finalized yet, but as soon as it is, I will be happy to, to let you all know who that, who that new person is. But we're, we're excited. We know there's big shoes to fill on both sides. The Community Foundation and the Chamber, but, uh, one last note for Shannon. She's been involved in so much. If you would like to wish her well and wish her off well, there is a gathering for Shannon on January thirteenth from four to seven at Tom and Jerry's.
Travis? Two people have done a lot for the community, so. Councilor Varda, welcome back. Good evening.
Thank you. Happy New Year. I will attend my first meeting tonight at the fire department.
Excellent. So we speed this one up. Councilor Halverson, good evening.
Good evening. Welcome Jim.
Thank you, first of all.
Secondly, I attended the park board meeting Monday night and that was Rich Newbauer's last park board meeting. And congratulations on his retirement and I hope he will have a great retirement. And Rich did a lot for this city through the park board. So I wish him well. That's all I have.
Excellent. Yeah, I was able to catch him on his way in, yeah. My first day. Myself, I have no report. Happy New Year, everybody. We'll move along. Our ambulance director tonight, I believe, is out on a training shift, um, working with one of our new medics. So I believe, uh, Councilor Halliwell, congratulations. I'm not sure if that came up before. And then, uh, Morgan Hanson, also the newest paramedic in town. So appreciate you guys and your hard work. Interim fire chief is not here. Police chief?
I don't have a report, sir.
No report. Thank you Vern. Building official, Ms. Galley.
Good evening, mayor and councils, and welcome back, Councilor Varda. Um, I just wanted to give a short report of how the year end for two thousand twenty four ended up and it was a big year for our department. So we ended up with seven hundred and ninety seven permits total. That's probably about seven times as many permits as we get for one year. It was a very good year. So we ended up with one hundred and one thousand, um, six hundred and fifty six dollars of fees that we brought in for the department. And the total value of all of the projects was thirty nine million, nine hundred seventy three thousand and ninety four dollars. So we had a really, really big year. So I just wanted to share that news.
A lot of investment in community. Thank you. Thank you, Mandy. City engineer, Mr. Fullstead. Oh my goodness. Oh, I tried to skip right over. You wanna try that one Larry? I haven't seen it for a while. It feels like forever. Mr. Johnson, good evening. Oh, wow, especially after that introduction. Why wouldn't you? Well, it works. Larry, good evening.
Thank you, mayor. Nothing against engineers either. Just a quick couple notes, um, you know, there's no snow. It rained after Christmas. That's not supposed to happen. I know some of the streets are rough. We decided to leave the snow there and not put a huge mound of slush in front of your driveways. So when you come home from work, it's frozen at seven o'clock and it rips front of your car off. So I do get a couple calls a week that some of the streets are rough. There's not a lot we can do with them, destroying the streets and the equipment, trying to do it. So we, the next warm up, you know, hopefully we get a little bit of snow because it's winter. It's supposed to snow. It'll make it look nice again and, um, and then we'll plow that and we'll get it all straightened out again. So we continue to work on that. You'll start to see things like, uh, we're working on projects, so the Christmas lights will come down earlier this year. Uh, it's, it's a general rule, we keep them up until the surveying Christmas, which was yesterday. So those Christmas lights on Lake Street will start to come down. So we'll change the season into the back to winter and then we'll wait for spring. And, uh, we're doing some, uh, unexpected maintenance on the water system, but we're operating normally. So just some of the things we're doing. It's pretty, it's kinda slow right now, so we're just catching up on projects and maintenance. So with that, welcome back, Councilor Varda, and if you have any other questions?
I have one question.
Please.
So have we looked into cleaning around the lake, around here's your manner? The brush and stuff, can we, that lady, she came there like, like a month ago or something?
Yeah, so we are in that ninety thousand dollar stormwater. That's not a permit, it's a grant. And in that, we are meeting with Kim. Her last name escapes me. She is our area hydrologist for the DNR. She's the one that makes the determination what we should and shouldn't do and what we can and can't do. Generally speaking, you know, we'll get rid of the dead foliage and stuff like that because we wanna keep that all like anyway. But as far as taking down green trees and weeds and stuff like that, you know, you really, really want some deterrent from wa, that rainwater and stormwater just running into the lake so it filters a little bit. You know, like you don't want your lawn leaves and stuff blowing into the lake. So we will do a little bit of clearing, uh, when we can, where we can, but we're still working through that. Yep.
Thank you, Larry.
Yep, thank you.
City Parks Trails, Rex. Ms. Bruska.
Good evening, council, and welcome, Councilor Varda.
Thank you.
I want to, as well as Marty, say thank you to Rich Newbauer for the time that he spent on the board. He was definitely a mentor to me and I'm going to miss him greatly. He was inspirational in many ways and he has given so much to the community. In terms of Ride the Range, if you remember that marketing campaign, uh, that markets Kuna and Tioga and Redhead, Giants Ridge, all the way to Ely. There's a program called the Ambassador Program in that and we just got a new ambassador. His name is Mathias Norenberg and he's been doing some fantastic work already. His main task in that role is to create content for social media, but he's gonna be joining us doing some programming too. So some fat bike rides and some snow shoeing, so that's really exciting. And then to the skate rink is in very good condition and I think we should have at least one of our candidates onboarded next week. I, hopefully, I think it's, the paperwork is a slow process, but, uh, we should get that skating rink open for the public here as soon as next week, I believe.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you, Vijit.
Thank you.
Thank you. City library supervisor, Ms. Christensen, good evening.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Quick update from the library. February is right around the corner and we have a pretty busy month. Monday, the third, will be the start of our winter reading program. And that's a six week program open for all ages, teens, kids, and adults. The day after, on the fourth, we have an author visit with Minnesota author Carrie Griffith. The presentation is gonna be focused on his latest book, The Gunflint Fall, Falling, Blow Down in the Boundary Waters, which tells the story of the devastating July fourth, nineteen ninety nine story from the perspective of those who were on the ground during and after the event. So it's a one hour long program and it's geared towards junior high students and adults. We're also gonna be participating in Polar Bear Days and we'll have, um, some after school activities every Wednesday for the whole month of February. So more details to come on that. And then I also just wanted to give us, um, a quick update on the community mural. Our call to artists resulted in thirty three submissions being received. And out of those thirty three, we interviewed six artists just this past week. And we're excited to share that the selection committee has chosen Kada Golden and Lena London as our art, as our artist for the new community mural that'll be coming this summer. Kada's a full-time, large-scale miris, mu, mularist. And Lena is a designer and artist that specializes in branding and graphic design. And together, um, they have over forty years of combined experience in large-scale art. So we're really looking forward to bringing them onboard for this project. And as part of their submission, they actually have a community engagement piece where the community members of all ages will be an active part and then actually, um, the application of the mural. And so that really leans into kind of that interactive piece. That's kind of been a vision for that space. And so, um, we're excited to share more about that as we move forward with the process. So our next steps with that will be drafting up a contract, working with attorney Lindsay, and then bringing that back to council for final approval. And welcome back, Councilor Varda. I think that's it.
Thank you, Katie.
Okay.
City attorney, Mr. Lindsay.
Thank you, mayor. I can give just one very brief update on the blight. So we do have, uh, for, the four formal complaints that were approved by the council have all been signed and they're out for service. We're doing, we're trying to take advantage of a service by mail rule that hopefully will encourage some engagement with the folks that are receiving them and will help the city save some money on service fees and things.
So, excellent. Thank you, Brian. Devon is out. City administrator, Mr. Grava, good evening.
Good evening, everybody. I do not have a formal report. Happy New Year. Welcome back, Councilor Varda. We're looking forward to a busy year, finishing up some projects and starting some new ones. So thank you all for being here.
Thank you. Alright, council, we're moving on to the consent agenda, which consists of the list of bills, payroll, and overtime. Look for a motion to approve consent agenda. Make the motion. Thank you Travis.
Support.
Thank you Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Unfinished business. You know, we, not to beat a dead horse or anything, but I did, um, talk about what, you know, we talked about the copies and stuff like that and how they don't come all crystal clear. I did ask Susan that whenever we do make, you know, you make a big packet like this. It's very hard to make six individual ones, right? So she makes a master copy, goes through and makes copies of it. I did request that when she does find herself with maps, pictures, and graphs, to please just print those out, you know, leave the copied ones inside the packet. You know, she doesn't need to go through and place them at page sixty and sixty-five and seventy-eight. Just go ahead and throw them inside the packet so it's clear and we can make sure we find where they go as we go through them. And if that does not work, then we can just kind of reassess it at, uh, that time. New business, Mandy. Welcome back to the podium.
Good evening. This Monday, January sixth, the planning commission met to hear the conditional use permit petition for the Redhead Trail expansion. The commission passed the conditional use permit unanimously. What the expansion is going to include is going to be an asphalt paved pump track, a skills course, designated parking, updated amenities, um, including a bike wash, a drinking fountain, mining equipment features, and lighting. So the planning commission did pass it unanimously. I'm just asking for your support.
Perfect. And we did have some guests at the meeting?
We did. We did. There, there wasn't any opposition. There was just some questions regarding some stockpiling that were answered, so.
Okay, council? Oh, go ahead.
Make tech motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, April.
One second.
Thank you Jed. Any further discussion?
Andy?
Yes.
What part of this is gonna be black topped?
Bridget, do you have a?
What area of?
At the trailhead, you know, the dirt trailhead where the gazebo is, um, section on the far further south, yeah, that is south, south side, kinda in the middle, but, um, there'll be a buffer around where the fencing is.
Oh, okay. Thank you. We have a motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Come back to the redhead, Jim. Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Welcome back, Jim.
Thank you.
And Happy New Year, everyone. I apologize, uh, when we were putting the packet together, that was my fault until I looked this afternoon at the pay application and realized that payment for the, um, change order number one was included in payment. So I need, we felt we needed to take care of the change order first. As you're aware, the city is serving only as a fiscal agent on this project and is being administered by Witsith and Associates along with the Citizens Committee for the Tommasoni Memorial Arch. So if you will turn to, uh, page seven, basically, the change order involves two things. The first one is the completion date extension from December twentieth of twenty four to Friday, June thirteenth of twenty twenty five, mainly because the arch itself, uh, in terms of its schedule of being manufactured and delivered, uh, goes into next spring and there is no change in cost associated with it. The second item, as you see in the documentation that follows, uh, provides that detailed information, is for, uh, an alternative lettering design on the arch itself, uh, which was proposed and approved by the engineers and that citizens committee, uh, for that memorial arch, uh, to improve the mounting and to lessen future maintenance costs. And as you see, uh, on page seven then, uh, there is an increase, uh, in the cost of that lettering of twenty six thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. Again, there was no, uh, change in cost associated with the extension of the final completion date. So with that, I would recommend the approval of change order number one in the amount of twenty six thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Counselor? There is no questions. I'd look for a motion support to approve the change order number one.
I just have one question. What was the difference in the letter from the first to the, their recommendation?
I don't know in detail. I think it's included in the package, Jim. I, I don't, and I think there's some examples there, but I don't know what was originally specified and then what, I think on page nine, I assume is that modified, uh, lettering, but I do not know what was there proposed originally.
Okay. Mr. Mayor? And what is the funding source? Is the grant covering this?
I think, Stephanie, I think all of this is being funded through I triple R B.
It's I triple R B and then other funding sources that were generated through the, by the citizen board. So it's sitting currently at the Community Foundation, but we'll get those ones.
Thank you.
The city, from what I understand, has no financial involvement, other than we are the fiscal agent for receiving and dispersing those funds.
That's correct.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you Travis.
Second.
Thank you, April. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. And then if you'll just turn back a couple pages, to page five is, uh, the pay application number one. And as I explained in the request for council action, um, you see in the middle of that page how the project was bid in terms of the bid items, the quantities, the unit prices, and then the bid unit prices and amounts. And then when you get to the last four columns, the third and the fourth columns from the end are the quantities for this period, being that this is pay application number one. Those two, um, columns, as well as the final two columns of the total to date are exactly the same. And as you go down through there, most of it is involved with the removal and replacement of curb and gutter sidewalks and then the installation of the pure pilings, uh, that are in place right now. So we're just really waiting for the arch itself, uh, to be completed next spring along with the plantings and so forth. And as you go down, then you'll see, uh, change order number one that we just talked about is listed there as well for payment. So we get down to the bottom two thirds of the page, you see the total to date of work completed being a hundred and seventy two thousand, six hundred and forty three dollars and fifty cents. We withhold the typical five percent of eight thousand, six hundred and thirty two dollars and eighteen cents, resulting in a, uh, recommended, uh, payment on pay application number one of a hundred and sixty four thousand, eleven dollars and thirty three cents. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that I can for you. I would recommend, uh, payment to TNT Construction Group, uh, in that amount. Thank you.
Alright, council, look for a motion support for the pay application number one.
Make the motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Support.
Thank you Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Alright, thank you again. Uh, as we work through the process of that, uh, one point two million dollar legislative money for the new public works garage, I, uh, the next step is site survey, uh, for the, um, as we work towards, uh, engineering plans and layout of the, uh, of the whole facility and, um, and where we can, uh, where we need our bore, bore, soil samples, borings for, uh, for the future building. So with that, um, it's, um, professional services, so generally speaking, doesn't have to be quoted, but it's my first time through something really like this on my own, so, or not on my own, but seeking out this without Jim, I guess. So with that, I did, um, I did get a couple quotes and S E H. With them being in town for other projects was, uh, was a little bit cheaper. So with that, I look for your, uh, I request your support and, and moving forward with S E H for fifty six hundred and I believe it was supposed to be fifty dollars, maybe it's sixty, for the, uh, site survey for the public works garage.
Fifty six, eighty, looks like.
Eighty.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So comparing apples to apples, um, were they giving the same thing or more?
Yeah, same thing. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, council.
Yeah, it was fifty six, eighty. Thank you, mayor.
You have the question, same question as April because I see S E H excluded this area on their map. Is Witsith exclude that area on their?
Yeah, so for the competing, so for the bidding process, they both bid the, the larger and then I got the email from Stephanie that those other lots are going for sale. So I excluded those from the contract with S E H. But for competitive bidding. But for competitive bidding purposes, they did bid larger of the two.
Okay, so the two bids are for the equal size.
Yep, SEH was able, was gonna do that, the same work for that lower price. Yep.
Thank you.
Counsel, I look for a motion and support to approve site survey contract with SEH. The amount is $5,680.
Motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Support.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry, I said Jim. It's all backwards tonight, you know? To you. All right, Stephanie.
Good evening. As the council is aware, we've been working on our fee schedule for quite some time. All departments have participated and we have seen this once at a working session. Devin did compile it all uniforms. So what you're seeing in front of you is the proposed fee schedule for 2025. We have our current rate and then we also have the proposed on the spreadsheet that is provided. The ones in the blue are, have changed. If you have any questions for specific changes, just let me know. We have department heads here that can answer those questions. It is best practice for these to come to council. I know you haven't seen them in the past, but moving forward annually, we should be reviewing our fees.
Thank you, Stephanie. There aren't any questions. I look for a motion and support of the new fees.
Make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, April.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item we have on the agenda is, as you all know, we had the hailstorm this summer. The city's been working through that with our insurance company on what has been, will be covered by insurance and what will not be covered by insurance. We have provided in the packet what, that breakdown. On page thirty-six in your packet, there is a spreadsheet that Devin has provided with the damage of the building that's being covered by the insurance and then there are portions of the buildings that are not being covered by insurance. We met on this topic and have decided that, excuse me, if it's a roof, sometimes insurance will only cover the portion of the roof that was damaged. We would like to move forward in approval from council to be able to do the full roofs on those scenarios. So we do have a couple scenarios where we will be having to take some of our funds to be able to cover, to finish those roofs in full. And those would be under, are in that spreadsheet. So then also within this, we have quotes from Gorts Exterior laying out every project that we have, what the materials costs are going to be in layman. So our recommendation is to approve the additional spending, which would be out of the general fund, $7,740, out of our campground reserve, $6,609, and then our next agenda item has the cemetery improvement account on it.
Thank you, Stephanie.
This is of the twenty-eight, eight-five-nine, eight-seven. Column C?
Yes, but this, for this motion, it would just be for those two to go above. Yeah, to take out of, we would take it out of probably contingency.
I don't think there's any reason to not finish the roof while you're in there doing it. You know, complete all of it right here in the ripping.
It's up to part. Mr. Mayor, so to clarify, we'll be doing the work in column B and column C only, but not column D.
Correct.
Column D is not going to be part of this work?
Correct. Because there were some additional screens. I had made the choice to not replace all of the screens. And then the football field press box, I will be contacting the school to see if they're interested in that. That's a siding. It's not a roof, so it's just dependent. They may or may not want to do that.
Nice. It says do not replace. I just want to make sure that that's part of the school.
No, those are the two items that we decided to not move forward.
Who owns the press box?
The school is here right here.
Currently, the city owns it. So when we had the damage, then we do have an agreement with the school to do a land swap, but we've kept the property until the fixes are done by the insurance company. Or else the swap would have already happened.
Oh, okay.
And Larry's been working on it with me, so.
Yep, just if there was.
Actually, Larry's been working on it.
Lights, lights.
That's not part of this discussion.
Well, yeah, not this one.
My biggest concern.
Yeah, it is. Don't let us forget about that either because I did send the email and I copied you on it, I believe, when I did, so. But yeah, as Stephanie said, that column B, Marty, is the approved by insurance. Yep, okay, and then the C was what she spoke of, the additional funds, yeah.
Counsel, I'd look for a motion to accept the hail damage repairs and approve the overture of the general fund's expenditure, $7,740, and from the campground of $6,690.76.
That one's coming out of cemetery. That's the next agenda item.
There's a cemetery improvement fund. So if I get motion support.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
So the next item I have on the agenda is for the cemetery improvement funds. As you're aware, we do have to take, go by resolution to take those funds out because they're restricted. So what we would propose for that building at the cemetery to finish it would be the $14,428.33. That's outlined in the resolution. So we would need approval on that resolution to be able to take those funds out of the restricted ones.
Counsel, I'd look for a motion to approve resolution zero-one-two-five-eight.
Make a motion. I'll second it.
Thank you, Jed. Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, this is the first item under Stephanie, which is the purchase of property at six-oh-five Third Street Southwest.
We had an EDA meeting this morning. EDA has a signed purchase agreement to purchase the property at six-oh-five Third Street Southwest. We have a signed resolution from the EDA to purchase that building. In our bylaws, we do have to come to council to ratify that purchase. And that's what we're requesting today, is the approval of the purchase of six-oh-five Third Street Southwest. It will all come out of EDA funds and be managed by the EDA.
I have a question.
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, for a second. How much is the purchase price?
Sixty thousand.
I'm sure you just said that. And then does the EDA know what they would like to do with it?
That is, there'll be ongoing discussions on that. We'll bring in probably Bob Strater, our economic development consultant, to have recommendations from him.
And is that in the business district currently or is that a different zoning?
I am not sure what the zoning is on that property.
General business, I believe, it was reasonable.
Under general? Because then there's only so many options you can actually do with that parcel, if it's in general or if it's in...
Correct. Yeah. So then we'll stay within that zoning.
Okay.
Was the EDA one-hundred percent for this or?
Yes.
My counsel, I'd look for a motion to approve the EDA purchase of property, six-oh-five Third Street Southwest.
Make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I just want to say.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
I just want to say that as soon as, that if the EDA could come back and say what they, what their plans are to do with the building, I'm having a hard time agreeing to purchasing it.
I'm a little on the other side. I'd actually like to look at our bylaws and switch it where the EDA doesn't need to come to the council. You know, the EDA's motion is, you know, your whole process is to be economic development for the community. So that's what we're kind of working towards. You know, you look at what Hibbing did and, you know, down on Main Street there, their job is to be proactive inside the community. Look at what is beneficial and, you know, kind of spur that development.
I get what you're saying. But purchasing property with, is it taxpayers' money?
No.
No?
It's all the EDA fund, so it's not out of general fund. It's going to be owned by the Chisholm EDA. The city of Chisholm would not own that property.
How is the EDA funded?
The funds are, they were through, like, when we give loans and then the loan payback with interest.
I think a lot of it goes back to nineteen eighty when the IRRB gave about $400,000 to SEDA and to have revolving loans and...
A lot of it's a revolving loan fund, is what it is, yeah. There was an initial seed.
Well, that's good. And then still the taxpayers, it isn't coming out of their...
Yeah, it does not come out of general fund. That's correct.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
One more time. I think it's good that it comes to the council just for... So we know. Okay.
Thank you.
Was that all in favor?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Next item, soccer update.
Next item, at our last, not our last, but previous city council meeting, we'd had an update with the soccer program. There were some changes proposed by the Chisholm Soccer Club. I was directed by the city council to reach out to them, to have a meeting. I did hear back from them that they would like a list of questions prior to the meeting. I did include that email correspondence with you in the packet, which is to outline what questions you would like to ask. We could schedule it within the working session.
So I just want to say that I believe that there's other possibilities that we could be, avenues that we could be going down here. I know registration did just open on Monday or Tuesday, I believe it was.
I, yeah, I'm not sure if they did open it. They did tell me it was going to be opened. I did request that they don't open the Chisholm registration because I needed approval from the council to be able to make those changes that were proposed.
One of the questions that came up from our last council meeting when we were talking about it was, you know, what does Nashwauk what, what does Grand Rapids pay, what's going on? And I believe the response was that it's, you know, private information. You know, it's none of our business what Grand Rapids pays for the youth soccer. And I just thought, we've won comment going back and all of a sudden the price drops a little bit. And again, you know, it doesn't drop by much for, you know, a lot of our conversation was the younger kids and then all of a sudden we have a new price schedule here.
So a person can't call the Grand Rapids soccer and see what is the cost? It's got to be public information, doesn't it?
Well, they're a private five oh one C three, so I don't know if it necessarily, but you could probably, I mean, if you know someone in Grand Rapids.
If you're interested. My kid's interested in playing.
You got Rapids? I don't know. Right, yeah, I got you, I got you. Kids that young. It seems like a lot to go back and forth on. You know, we're trying to sit here and, you know, have something for our children and our youth in town. Bridgette, you're in here, you know, maybe Stephanie can talk, you know, if there's any ideas of just doing our own. You know, why don't we do our own? You know, why don't we start our own soccer program? You know, we're teaming up with Hibbing. You know, they doubled the price off the bat before there was even a conversation for it. Communication has not been very well.
What were the prices last year?
We...
Last year, the prices were forty-five dollars. Thirty-five? Thirty, and the city contributed.
Bridgette, come up here.
We just approved forty-five. It's in that fee schedule.
They were thirty last year, this year.
For this year, we approved forty-five.
You just approved to increase to forty-five. Yeah, that was our...
There's a big difference between what we approved and what Hibbing wants to turn.
Is it going to be a huge problem for you to start this if we decide to start on our own?
It sounds like I have support from Stephanie Skraba and maybe Travis Vaki to get, to get it going. I wouldn't say it'll be a huge lift. No. It will be more work for us, but that's what we're here for.
I agree.
Well, I think the field availability could become an issue because we only really have the football field in Navon because the school construction is taking that field away. It wasn't a great field, but it was still a space.
Small fields for the small kids worked okay.
We are limited for field space, so playing games. I've been in communication with Nashwauk. Her name's Jody Lopez and she's considering the same scenario as us, considering at this point too. So ideally, we both, you know, are in something together so that we can play games. I won't know, you know, her response yet, but she's working through these same issues with communicating to the families of Nashwauk. I have yet to reach out to the families. We have a coaches meeting Thursday, tomorrow, so.
I'll say I have a, my, aside from my main job, I do have a personal property in the industrial park and there's a lot of space there. And if there was something to alleviate my partner's concern about, you know, what would happen if a kid would fall and break their leg, I would gladly donate that space for youths for their practices or games or anything like that. It's awesome.
Yeah, I think we looked at that last year because we were limited on space. So we're getting, this program's growing. A hundred kids is the average number, so it's a big program. And I don't recall if the determination was that they needed to play on city property to be covered by city insurance. That may have been what that conclusion was. I can look into that.
Brian, have a step off, but...
How many kids per team?
We have two teams in each age bracket and per team, average of twelve, ten, ten to twelve on each team.
So I've thought quite at length regarding this, just not just as my role here, but as AD. Because it, I mean, regardless of how we decide to do this, it's a feeder program. The goal is to get them to play in high school. And currently, we have a co-op with Hibbing and that, so the feeder program is to Hibbing-Chisholm, boys and girls soccer. Currently, we have six girls right now that play varsity and JV and one, one boy, I think, that plays junior high in, over in Hibbing or JV. So there's a, there's a lot of, there's, I mean, if we go on our own, yeah, there's, there's effect. I mean, if you have two teams per division, I mean, you're only playing each other. When you play games, you're only playing each other unless you mix up the, which depending on scale, I think there's some availability to do that. It's, I don't believe that we're land, we're space locked. Like, I feel like there are, the football field, the football team has a practice field. It's plenty big enough for a soccer field or two maybe even, you know? There's baseball fields. The outfield is plenty big enough for a soccer field. Like, I don't, I mean, space is not a concern of mine. You know, the, it's, it's horrible that we're in this situation, I guess, to start with. I mean, because do I think we can do it? Without a doubt. I have no doubt, I know I, no problem saying yes between me and you and we can figure out a schedule and practice times and, you know? It's more what, what, if anything, are the kids losing out of, you know, by? And, and really, it boils down to competition, you know, playing other teams in other schools and other towns. They won't get that and maybe that's okay. I mean, a hundred kids is a lot of kids, you know? But that's really, at the end of the day, that's the decision you're making, is really whether they're going to play against the Hibbing teams and the Rapids teams and the Nashwauk teams or not. I mean, so I, you know, either way we go, I think we're fine. You know, I know there's some people that may be opposed to that, you know, and to join Hibbing and, you know, I think there's a lot of people that would say, yeah, you should, you should do your own. But again, if we do our own, we're just, you know, we're basically having two teams in each age bracket playing each other when you come to games. Unless you mix it up, you know, which again, mixing it up isn't a bad thing. I think that you probably would do that some sort of rotationally anyway. But, but yeah, I mean, we do have a high school program, so I want this to be successful. I will do whatever I can to help Bridgette with space, with equipment, you know, all that stuff because I want to continue that, that feeder program that we have. And, you know, I would love nothing more than to have, Chisholm to have a soccer team for the first time in history. And, you know, I would love nothing more than to have, Chisholm to have a soccer team for the first time in history. You know, maybe that, maybe that will happen. I don't know. But, yeah, so those are kind of my thoughts in both here and also as AD.
Thank you, Travis.
And these prices are quite a jump, so see, we vote to go with this, does the Chisholm still able and willing to provide funding for the program? So, you know, some families don't have all this in town and... Like every other city, it's, this is costly to some people.
It's very costly. Well, one of the things that we talked about with the Hibbing is there's no control on scheduling either, the teams, the rostering. So it's kind of hard for some people when you're carpoolsing and you're worrying about where your kids are going and what team they're on. You know, so I mean, they were really kind of limiting our input and our, and it's just, a big wrench was thrown in this for no reason at all.
And, and I spoke to a few people about this and they won't have any Chisholm people on the board, is what I heard.
They currently don't.
Currently don't.
Currently don't, yeah.
And they met in October where they set these changes and we didn't find out about it until the end of December.
Mr. Mayor, just the fact all this thing all came out, I mean, we have to submit questions for them to answer formally? That's, I mean, I mean, we were asking some questions, we're asking for a meeting, we're asking to have a seat at tables, all we're simply asking. And this is our, the bottle from them, I don't agree with it.
I would like to direct our staff to search out of, you know, what it would look like for us to do our own, our own. And then, you know, reach out to Nashwaukewa, maybe even Grand Rapids, you know, any others from Cherry or, you know, any other areas, Buell or wherever, you know, obviously, programs going on over on the east side. But, you know, I think we can grow it and there might be other smaller communities out there that are feeling that eighty dollars for your kid to play soccer is, you know, a little too much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would continue the outreach even further. Go to MIB, go to Virginia, go to Ebbly, ask any of those teams and those communities. I know they have a YMCA summer league in Mountain and Buell, or Mountain and Virginia. But maybe some of them would be interested in the spring recreational league. And talk to the coaches and get their feedback and the coaches' meetings, see what they're saying. And I think Nashwaukewa and, but I'd even reach further to the east and see if, because I kind of think that YMCA thing in Mountain and Virginia is, I think that's summer, or this is spring. And maybe there's interest there as well. I don't, I don't know. And as far as varsity, I get the Chisholm participation and Hibbing varsity obviously is in this field. I was a coach for six years and after sixth grade, after Vic Pollard, all the kids, Chisholm kids pretty much drop off at that point. And then, a lot of them would like to keep playing and they totally they'd like to keep playing, but they don't want to all of a sudden just have to go to Hibbing and be on the Hibbing traveling team. Even back then, when I was coaching, I thought it would be nice if Chisholm had a JV and a varsity team so we could keep developing our players as well. And see which kids want to keep going and want to pursue it in JV and varsity.
Well, and I guess, you know, with my AD hat on, if we decide to go on our own, like, I guess that is gonna be my goal. Like, if I'm gonna put the time in on the school side of things, I guess my goal would be to, at some point, hope to have a Chisholm, at least a Chisholm JV, you know?
There's a beautiful field in Buell and a beautiful field in Mountain.
Yeah. And I mean, we'll have space, you know, when the, when the school construction is done and the elementary building is knocked down, there'll be sixty yards of green space right there.
Yeah, I know.
So I mean, that's, there's, so, I mean, there's, there's opportunity. There's no doubt about that. There's opportunity. And I, if we decide to go on our own for a year and try it out and then, you know, in the meantime, like, I, I agree with Jed, like, I don't want to punish a kid, first of all, for the Hibbing-Chisholm adult board not being willing to work with us. But at the same time, you know, maybe it's the opportunity to, if we have a hundred kids, like, I have a hard time believing there's not six or eight of them that, each year or in each level, that would want to continue, you know? And I will plug the girls. We have six girls on the varsity and JV, which is about, you know, a good portion of the kids who play soccer between the two towns. So I will, I will give them that plug. But yeah, it's gonna have to be a feeder program either way. If we go on our own, I think as, as an AD, I would love to make that push, you know, to Chisholm kids to...
Soccer's becoming more popular around here for sure. Yeah.
So do you want to make a motion to direct Bridget to, or do we even need a motion to direct our staff to come back with a plan? Or what would you like to see?
Yeah, that's my, I didn't add it to that working session that you're gonna schedule, I think, so that we can come back with what we found at that time.
All right. Everyone arrive with that? Okay.
So what?
So what table is?
We're gonna add it to our working session.
Okay.
Then we have, coming up at the end, we direct our staff, in the meantime, to, I don't think we need a motion to direct our staff to
No.
check out different avenues, so.
Do you think, Bridget, I guess, just one final question, if we add this to our working session, which is on...
It's not scheduled yet.
Not scheduled yet. But do you, do you think that they're gonna? Because we're not registering, people aren't registering, do you think, are they gonna say, you're out? If we don't give a yes or no answer to them tonight?
Oh.
I mean, if we hold people for registering for another two weeks.
Registration's open for till like February, isn't it?
I think that what will happen is they won't get the early bird registration, is what I've been told.
Yeah.
That's not the end.
Yeah, we have a couple of ones.
I'm sure we can find a way, since we're the ones that are holding it up, maybe there's a way that through our scholarship funds, we can help alleviate some of that pain.
And, and Hibbing does, Hibbing-Chisholm Soccer Club does offer scholarships too, but I wouldn't call it significant. I think it's twenty-two dollars per family, but there are discounts, family. So if it's multiple children in the program, there's a discount there too. They did ask that if families needed assistance above and beyond what they offer, but wanted to play, that, that's where Chisholm could be helpful.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question for the attorney. So the Hibbing-Chisholm Soccer Club is a nonprofit? Is it a private nonprofit?
Um, yeah, and it's, it's an interesting question because it's called the Hibbing-Chisholm Soccer Club.
I'm just wondering.
You think they want to include Chisholm a little bit more? Are they violating any rules by what they're doing? Not necessarily. Would it, may it violate some of their mission? It may. Could it affect their nonprofit status if people who qualify are essentially being treated differently or being excluded from the program practically? It may, but I can't say that anything that they're doing is per se illegal.
I have another question for you.
Okay.
On that note.
Sure.
So if Bridget or Stephanie had asked for the financials and they're not, they're withholding those?
They should...
How come they can't publicly disclose them? Because they're supposed to if they're nonprofit.
So there's nothing that says that they can't disclose them? I, I think they, I think they could share the information with us if they wanted to. There's, there's nothing that would prevent them
Okay.
from sharing information, especially if we're one of the primary participants in the group and we're named in the name of the club.
First name. Name, please, no, the first one.
So I, I would really hope that the, the avenue goes towards us creating our own. You know, I think everything this council has done, in every negotiation we've had, we operate in good faith. And this just, this does not seem correct. This doesn't seem right. Doesn't have a good feeling.
You have an honest team.
Doesn't feel right.
That works here and up here. So I appreciate you guys.
Okay, we will add that to our working session when we get there. Yeah, moving on. Next up is the ratifying council boards and commissions. Council, I set forth my plan in front of you here. Run through it here with you. Everything happens for a reason in here. Method to my madness, economic development authority. This is an early morning, went middle of the week meeting that a lot of people can't really meet or make. So I'm gonna leave myself and Counselor Halliwell on that board. The Board of Appeals, I believe April and Marty did it last time, so I will do that with Marty this time. The Chair of Gambling, we'll leave that with Counselor Vaki. The Housing and Redevelopment Authority, I will take over that from Cheyenne. The Library Board, Counselor Fulton should remain there because of your profession. Planning and zoning, I will stay on that one. Police Commission, Counselor Vaki will stay on that one in replacement of Counselor Mikla Rahah. Public Utilities Commission, Counselor Halliwell will stay on that one because of, well, he's been on there for a long time. There's a lot in and out, a lot of moving pieces and parts and, yeah, especially with them being on the Central Iron Range Santerre sewer district. The Recreation Board, I did make a change on this one. I'll lay Counselor Vaki on that due to his work at the school and the AD and especially with the possibility of a new soccer program coming to town. I definitely would utilize his skills there. Volunteer Fire Department, I will move Counselor Barta onto that in replacement of me, so I can step back. I know the fire department would love to have you back. Campground Committee would stay as Counselor Halverson and Counselor Fulton, because that's gonna coincide with the next one, which would be the Redhead Committee and leave Counselor Halverson on that one. Being as the campground and the redhead are almost intertwined. And then going down to the council reps, to their committees, I would, Counselor Fulton onto the Yellow Ribbon. Counselor Vaki to stay on the Chamber of Commerce, Counselor Fulton on the Youth Center, Counselor Fulton on the Community Education, Counselor Vaki on Iron Range Youth in Action, Counselor Barta to Museum of Mining, myself onto the Safety Committee and myself onto the Precious Pos Committee. I'd look for a motion to approve Resolution zero one two five dash nine with those appointments. Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, two copies here. Resolution zero one two five dash one zero, no brainer in my opinion. I would love to have you. Thank you for being here. Reappoint the city administrator. I'll look for a motion for zero one two five dash ten.
Motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Jed. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, reappointment of the Building Zoning Safety Official, Resolution zero one two five dash eleven. Mandy, thank you, we appreciate you.
Motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to approve Resolution zero one two five dash one two, reappoint Trustenty Law Firm.
Motion.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution zero one two five dash one three, reappoint interim fire chief, Jason Worley.
Support for a motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Marty. Any further discussion?
One question. Do we have a plan to, for a new fire chief?
Yes, I've been working with Ravina. I just want her to review some of the documents to the fire department and then just make sure everything is where we're at and then we'll move forward with that. So that's where we're at right now.
I was just gonna ask why the interim tag. Oh, I know.
I think like everything else, we're gonna have to make sure that we have a proper hiring process in place and make sure we follow it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now moving on to the appointments. Where are we here? So appointment to the EDA, one seat for six years. We have one application. So I'll look for a motion to reappoint Shannon Kisho Roach.
Motion.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Appointment to the Chisholm Parks Trails Rec Advisory Board, we had two seats open for two, two seats for two-year terms. We have two applicants. So I'd look for a motion to appoint Gregory Johnson to the Parks Trails Rec Advisory Board. Thank you, Jim.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'd look for a motion to appoint Brandon Fiedler, reappoint Brandon Fiedler to the Parks Trails Rec Advisory Board.
Make the motion.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I believe one of those people even has a history as a soccer coach. Appointment to the Library Board, three seats open, one for a two-year term, two for a three-year term. We had, is that just one applicant that we had?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah? Okay, so I'd look for a motion to appoint Brittany Hankston for a three-year term.
Make that motion.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, the appointment to the Planning Commission, we have one seat open for a three-year term, one applicant. I would look for a motion to appoint Ryan Baumgard, reappoint Ryan Baumgard.
Motion.
Thank you, Jim.
Second.
Thank you, Marty.
Jed.
I think Marty was there too? I heard this one on my left ear this time.
It was a tie. I'm that much closer.
Yeah, right, right. But you got the last one, so, thank you, Marty. Marty was the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Point? Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, whoa, getting tongue tied here. Public Utility Commission, two seats open for two-year terms. Two applicants, so I'd look for a motion to approve Bruce Maddick.
Motion.
Thank you, Jed.
Support.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'd look for a motion to appoint, reappoint Larry Pervananzi.
Motion.
Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Appointment to the Police Commission, one seat open for a three-year term. We had two applicants. I would look for a motion to reappoint Stephanie Halliwell. Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stan, counselor?
Does he have to? It's not financial.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Appointment to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, one seat open for a five-year term, one applicant. I'd look for a motion to appoint Caesar Portega to the HRA. Thank you, April.
Support.
Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion? Marty?
You guys sound a lot alike. I should have rethought this.
Thank you, Marty. Marty, yep, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Last on the list here is to schedule a working session. So this working session, I would like to, I have a pretty busy month of January and I think that this needs to happen in January. I'm not sure, you know, we do have a council meeting on the twenty-second. I'm not sure if we want to do it after that. I love the thought of just giving up that one Wednesday. But if that does not work or we need more time, I'm fine with another date. I would look for the twenty-third or possibly the twenty-ninth, which is the following Wednesday. I'm not sure if those two dates work for everybody else or anybody else.
I would prefer to keep it the same at the council meeting. It'd be easier.
Which second works for me?
After the council meeting? No, I guess that's when...
After?
After?
Travis?
Okay, so let's look at setting it at for six thirty, January twenty-second.
Twenty-five after six thirty?
As I weigh, if it goes, we can start it later. We just can't start it early, so. Start at six and really put a fire under us. So on this working session, I would like to have the demo structure at thirty-four. I'm missing some numbers there. What? Thirty-Fourth Street Northwest?
Thirty-Fourth.
Thirty-Fourth Street. So demolition of structure at Thirty-Fourth Street Northwest, Mill and Overlay Project.
Yeah, that's not right. Just hold on.
Okay, we'll, we'll come back to that one. We'll come back to that one.
It's called demo structure.
Thirty-Fourth Street.
Fourth Street.
But that, that's not right. They're gonna give us the right one. So cannabis, I'd like to throw cannabis back on the working session. You know, it kind of went to the wayside. Definitely think we have to talk about that.
Cannabis.
I thought you said cannabis.
Cannabis, no, cannabis. You know, we're getting closer and closer, so.
Should write it down. Just write it down. Just write it down for me, please.
So on this working session will be cannabis, so obviously. Soccer will be on this working session, emergency services, boards and commissions, and demolition.
I can't write this that fast. Did you say cannabis?
Cannabis, yes. Marijuana. We're gonna talk about marijuana.
Don't we have a committee?
We do have a committee.
Yep.
And we're gonna put it back on a working session to bring it back and provide some direction.
Perfect.
You and Marty, I think, were on that committee? Or you, Marty and Jed?
Yep.
I think we had one meeting.
So now it's time to get back on it, you know, with January first rolling through, there's gonna be new, uh, new, the laws and regulations are coming up, right? So, March, for cannabis, soccer.
EMS?
And demolition
Demos.
of Thirty-first Street Northwest.
Our favorite building.
So, EMS? EMS boards and commissions?
Boards and commissions.
EMS boards, okay.
That's gonna be a long working session.
Maybe.
Bring a pizza.
Yeah, pizza party.
Five items.
We gotta celebrate.
One, two, five, yes. Yeah, I think we'll lay out the ones that are, take priority and then the stuff that's more discussion, we will probably just, you know, put those on the back end. So with those five items, I'd look for a motion to schedule a working session for January twenty-second, six-thirty PM to discuss demolition of Thirty-first Street Northwest, Mill and Overlay, cannabis, soccer, emergency services, boards and commissions.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Jed. Thank you, April. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Miscellaneous. Anybody have anything?
That copy machine, man. Gotta get that fixed. I'm just kidding. I'm joking. He already addressed it.
I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Travis. Thank you, Jed.